So we've got these young ladies who are here from the Spring Canyon Middle School. And we invited them to be on the rostrum so that they could kind of see it from the backside here, so see how this all works. It's probably pretty unimpressive, but anyway, we're glad to have you here. We'll first here, let's first of all, have a motion to approve the meeting's agenda.
Our motion that we approve the meeting's agenda is written.
Okay, motion and second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, we welcome these young ladies here, we appreciate them coming here, and we'll let them introduce themselves so that we can hear their name and kind of what their purpose for them being here, so would you like to take, just introduce yourself?
I'm Hadley Sorensen, and I'm here because Ms. Burge, my social studies teacher, sent us.
Okay, there you go.
Um, I'm Jolena Wiseman, and same reason.
I'm Penny Vought, and I'm here for the same reason they are.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad that you're here. Alrighty, what we'll do is this, is that we have a, is Krista on here, Krista here? Okay, alright, sounds good. If anyone'd like to make comments, I have one from Mr. John Swop, who would like to address the city council. He's welcome to come when I, we have a moment here. But if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to say a few words, you're welcome to come up and talk with Kim Crane, and fill out a report so that we at least know who, for the record, who you are and for the purpose for you coming here, so.
Did we want to pray?
Yeah.
Where's the invocation and pledge, are they not here?
Uh, they're not, so well, first of all, let's do our invocation, thank you. It looked a little shorter, so, alright.
Father in heaven, we're grateful this evening to be able to come together as residents and members of this great city. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to live in such fortunate circumstances, for the many blessings that we received from the, we're grateful for all the rain and snow that we've received, and we're grateful especially now that as the weather has been tempered and slowly become warmer, that we've been preserved from flooding. We ask that we might continue to be blessed as the water continues to rise, that that all will go well, and there won't be any significant damage or implications because of it. We are grateful for the chance we have to come together to discuss matters of important business. We ask that as we do so, that we might be able to be civil and be able to come to conclusions that will be best for the residents of this, of this city. Again, we're grateful for many blessings, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Could we all stand and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got the whole bowl, huh?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Swop, if you'd like to take a moment, take three or four minutes and kind of explain why you're here and what, we can't really do official action, but we certainly can listen to you and then perhaps give some direction on somebody to help you, so.
A while back, we came here telling about some trees that died because they, um, when they took the water, water out, you know, we ditched one, and they killed all the trees there, and it was going to fall on a power line. They came and cut it down, and it just left the logs there too. And I said, well, this was going to fall on this other place too, on my panels, my corrals, and it just, there was a big windstorm just recently, and it did, it fell and busted a bunch of them. So we'd like to have the city come and take it off if they could, and also pay us for the panels.
Okay, John, do you want to?
Yeah, I apologize, I thought I sent an email to you, did it not get to you?
No, it did not.
You kept on conveying the stuff, the mayor's stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. No, and also copied on the email, Stacy in the back, can you raise your hand, Stacy? So this is Stacy Child, um, her crews have been pretty busy dealing with flooding the last little bit, so they haven't been able to get to everything they need to, but they have some people on their crews that are going to come over and take that tree off. Also too, why don't we step outside, I can talk to you a little bit about filing a claim and a few things like that with the city. Does that sound alright? Yeah, thank you.
And we apologize for having you come down, and, no, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're here. We're glad you're here.
I'm just addressing that, I appreciate it.
Alright, sounds good. Right, I appreciate your, your explanation on the email, so, okay, great. Those who have come in late, Spencer, if you would like to come up and talk with Kim Crane and fill out a report so that you can have a chance to address the council, we'll let you do that in relationship to, to what you've come down for, so we appreciate you being here. And we'll hold off on that just for a minute while he gets that filled out. Okay, we have two items on the consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda at all? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's move to item number four in relationship to short-term rentals. Josh, are you here to do, oh, Carla, okay, great. Oh, yes, I see your name.
The mayor's awards, did we not have those? It's deferred.
Okay, um, yes, this is a really very straightforward kind of item to come before you. It was brought to our attention from Scott Stewart, our building, our chief building official, that we didn't have any way to make sure that short-term rentals that are allowed within the city are, in, in older homes are in compliance with having egress out of the rooms or having the carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. This really only becomes a problem in the older homes that may be establishing their, a room or a basement or whatever as an, as a short-term rental. The new homes don't really have to worry about it because the homes in general will meet those building code specifications, but the older ones were grandfathered in, and as a result, if they were to establish a short-term rental within their home, they would not meet those same requirements. So this is just clarifies that, and would amend the ordinance to make sure that anyone, regardless of the age of their home, if they are, if they come to us and get a license for a short-term rental, that they would need to make sure, they would then be inspected by one of our building inspectors to make sure that they had egress out of the room and that the smoke detectors and motion, and fire detectors, excuse me, carbon monoxide and smoke detectors are in some way either through Bluetooth or wire and connected to the rest of the detectors in the home. So that is basically all it does, it's just a matter of safety for those who may be here as, as guests in the short-term rentals type situation.
So if there, if there is an old home that is, has part of the home as a short-term rental, and they don't have proper egress, I mean, the, the smoke alarms and, and carbon monoxide detectors and stuff are an easy fix.
Yes.
The egress isn't so easy, so.
So they would not be, they would then not be able to get.
So they wouldn't be permitted.
They would not be able to get a license to do a short-term rental until that was remediated.
Are there any other units that are grandfathered in?
No, it's just these, and we really honestly, at this point, we haven't had any that have, have had to be dealt with in this situation, or, but it was just a matter of, oh, this is something we probably need to look at. Most of the short-term rental applications and licenses that we've had have all been in newer homes, and these building codes for that are, I mean, by newer, I mean, they're, you know, fair, they can still be considered, you know, older homes, but we're looking at ones that may have been built in the 1940s or whatever and have not been renovated. And since we do have that inventory in the city, we just want to make sure and that all of those would provide safety for whomever was, was sleeping in them.
So, so for example, a home in Brookside with an STR in the basement would have to, would have to dig out around the foundation and cut an entryway or window, big enough window to get out of?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
And so do, is that our responsibility because we're making them be licensed?
Yes, yes, and so they're.
So, do we have any liability with the, when we license, when we give somebody a license?
And, and John would speak better to that, or Troy more than, more than I would, but we would want to make sure, I, I would think that just for as.
Or is it more just for safety?
It's more just for safety and to, if, if they are licensed by the city, I don't know if we would bear any liability legally, but we certainly as, in coordination and compliance with our general plan and the spirit of the general plan to maintain the health and safety of, of those in our community and those who are guests here, we would want to do that. But as far as the legal implications, that I, I can't speak to.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then for the ordinance.
I'll motion to approve ordinance 07-2023 to amend Springville City Code 116133 residential short-term residence to require each sleeping room in the residence in which it is situated comply with minimal, minimum standards of life safety.
Okay, I have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That helped Carla, I get it straightened around. Uh, well, I'd like to have, I appreciate Spencer Hedley coming here from, and I, and I thought I put him on the agenda, that's why we had a little bit of mix-up, and it's my fault, Kim, for not getting him on the agenda, but he has a presentation. I've known Spencer for hmm, quite a few years, and we're of course quite familiar, Jason Miller and I, with Mr. Howard Hedley from the UVA, that's his son Spencer. So we appreciate him coming down here, and he called me the other day and talked a little bit about something that he wanted to present here to the city council. And I've given each of you a, something that he sent to me, it's in relationship to Bluffdale, what they did, so he can kind of see what they have accomplished or what they've done. So Spencer, if you want to come up and kind of make your presentation and take a few moments with him and perhaps ask some questions and kind of tell a little bit about what, what that's all about, does that sound okay?
Yep.
And who's your accomplice in crime here?
Is Ava Wood, she is another member, member on our youth council.
That's great, great, welcome Ava.
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 Ava, okay, thank you.
Um, my name is Spencer Hedley, and I am a 10th grader, 10th grade student at American Preparatory Academy, with me is Ava Wood. I'm the founder of the youth council for the organization Constitution Live, I'm the for the Constitution Live, and our purpose is to promote reading and understanding of the constitution as citizens, because we believe the constitution is the first step to healing the divides in our nation. We, we are building a youth council with the hope of uniting students to, to our cause in every county and city to support reading the constitution. We are here to share our vision and look to schedule a date to do a Springville reading. Constitution Live wants to help you to use your influence to invite and persuade all of your constituents to read the constitution. It only takes 45 minutes. Constitution Live is not a political organization. We represent Utah at large, we are a community focused grassroots movement aimed at inviting everyone in America to read the const, to read the constitution. Our website is constitutionweek.live. The materials on the website are free to be copied and rebranded with your city or district. Ava has distributed some of these materials. Included are a constitution activity booklet with, with, inside with a newsletter. Both of these are present on the website.
We are asking the Springville City Council to approve a resolution to participate in reading the constitution during Constitution Week this year. This would require you to set a date, place, and intended, intended audience where you city leaders, guests, and students get together to read the constitution. We did this with Bluffdale City last year, and we coordinated with all the schools in the city, and they streamed the event, which was very successful. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions?
I have one, how many people showed up, is it pretty good?
Um, so we broadcasted it to every, almost every school in Bluffdale. They started at around eight o'clock in the morning, and we estimate that it was in, entered into over a hundred classrooms and then replayed, replayed elsewhere.
It was a school day when you did it?
Yeah, so it was, it was a school day when we did it, that's kind of when Constitution Week is, the September 17th.
They are, most schools kind of do something now, a little bit, so this would be, they probably would like to have this.
Yeah, so now Bluffdale is actually doing it by themselves this year, we kind of set them up to do it, and they're doing a recurring event, kind of using that, because every student, school kind of does a re, a constitution event, so they are using that as their precedent.
And to help you is that Mr. Sorensen on the very end, it used to be the Nebo School District Superintendent, so he's familiar with a little about what you're talking about, so.
It should be easy to coordinate with the schools, I would think.
So, so talk with us a little bit about the schools and what their feelings would be toward this and how it could work.
I would, it, it, it would vary by school, there would be some that say we can't fit it in, others would say, well, we wanted to do something, this would be something good to do. The same reading for a group of first graders and a group of high school history students would be, you kind of have to adjust, I think, what you do, but I.
So we have, we are, we do have some split up resources on there, so currently we have a constitution that's split up into 52 speaking parts, where in Bluffdale they had people like on the city council, the mayor, they had some people from Daughters of American Revolution Foundation speak, but then we also have a bill of rights format where it's just the bill of rights with 10 speaking parts instead.
Yeah, so I, I think that the key is work, the city for us would be easy to help do it, maybe even broadcast, you'd need a place to broadcast from, I assume.
Yes.
Like here, we have the facilities to do it, we could pull it off here, and then how we would stream it or, you know, get it into the schools, let them accept it, work together with them, I think it, I think it, can't see any reason not to do it, there's no reason not to do it, to try.
And do you go out to the schools and talk with them individually after we've given our resolution? You make those coordinated efforts, is that right?
Yes, so with Bluffdale, we got the mayor's approval, and we went out and talked to the schools if they wanted to participate, we talked to three, there was three charter schools also that participated in the Bluffdale region, along with the online school.
Do you do it with a YouTube channel? How do you do it?
Um, so we livestream it, I, we have a website, I believe it's west, it was livestreamed on the website, I could be mistaken.
That, that, well, that works, so.
Yeah, we have the replay of the Bluffdale on that website also.
Mayor, I like the idea of doing a, a city resolution, saying that, hey, we support this, and even, you know, if there was like a shorter abbreviated version, I could see reading pieces of that during council, I think that'd be worthwhile, I think it'd be really great, honestly.
I, I agree, I think it's wonderful, I'm so happy that, that you guys took the initiative to get this going, thank you, I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and I'd like to participate in it, as a city.
Great.
That's easy.
So it's, it wasn't on the agenda because of my boo-boo, so we can't make an official action, so give me some direction, Cam or Troy, as to how we might best be able to do this, or?
Yeah, it depends on how you want to approach it, and you have the authorization to sign your own resolutions, if you want the council behind that, we need to place it on an agenda in two weeks, the resolution itself, so we can either have you sign your own resolution or a council-supported one on the 16th.
Well, we're not under any time constraint because this is in September, so I, I think it'd look a lot better if everybody signed it personally, so, it's okay, sounds good.
Yeah, the one question I had was, is Stacy still, what, when is the Springville birthday party this fall? Do we know, isn't it about that time?
It is that time.
See, that's the only question I have, is we overpack one day or something, we have to make sure we work, but that won't be on a school day, will it? So this would be like the day before.
Friday morning.
Yeah.
And there's other areas across the nation, or is it just our state that participates in this? Constitution Week is a national, isn't it?
Constitution Week is a national thing, there is a federal law that if a school does receive public funding, they are required to hold some type of constitution event or constitution acknowledgement for their school, that's what I think we were talking about with Bluffdale, then doing it for their schools.
Well, thank you, you two, it looks like you've won over the council, so what we'll do to remedy my error is that we'll put it on the agenda for the 16th and we'll get a resolution, you won't have to come down, but we can either mail it to you, email it to you, or send a scanned copy of it, and then why don't you let us know then what it is we need to do to coordinate with you, so, does that sound okay?
Yeah, it does.
Their materials, sorry, do your materials have a proposed resolution on it on your website, or?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay, we can work on that.
Okay, sounds good, well, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
If you ever cut that hair, could you put it in a little bag and drop it by my house? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe drop some by the mayor, too.
Um, I'm, I met Spencer in a swimming pool at Sun Valley when he was five, and, what's that?
You weren't throwing me around?
I wasn't throwing you around, but I turned around and you hit me over the head with one of those little styrofoam tubes, and since then, our, our relationship has grown immensely, so.
I love you.
I know that, you wouldn't have hit me, or you'd have hit me extra hard, so, yeah, it's, it's personal privilege, is I, I have a great association with his father and have been for many years, and he's a remarkable leader and has done such a great deal of work, not only privately but publicly for not only banks but also for just the general public, and I just acknowledge that in front of everyone, so Howard, we're grateful that you're here, and, and we appreciate you being and coming down, so, thank you. Okay, we have a, we have a clapping going on, so that's good. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to, is it item number five, Josh?
We were just making our own motion and seconding it on the back row that is part of our observance, that John should read the constitution for us as our city attorney.
In dramatic voice.
I think there's a lot better voices, but thank you, Josh.
Costume, too.
With the wedding, marry them. All right, thank you both, I mean, thank you all. Tonight, our, my first item is to bring forward to you for action the proposed zone map amendment from the community commercial zone to the Main Street South Gateway Zone for the area shown on this map, essentially extending from 400 South to 800 South for properties fronting Main Street along both sides.
Josh?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that item number six?
Oh, I started in the wrong direction, didn't I? Sorry. No, I'll, I'll start at the height, I put my presentation in the wrong direction.
That's alright.
Thanks for catching that. So, this is an item, is an amendment to the height standards in the Main Street South Gateway Zone, so these, both of the items tonight deal with the Main Street South Gateway Zone. The, as we've been, and as you saw in your staff report, is we've been working through with a development group in trying to get a project done on the, on the Allen's block, the first block where we've implemented the Main Street South Gateway Zone. We've dealt with a number of issues, unanticipated issues, conflicts or other elements inside of the code, trying to get it, continue to refine it and get it ready to really facilitate the development of a project. In December of 2021, you approved a pretty broad set of amendments to facilitate the proposed development and to address items that the, that staff had identified. Then earlier this year, you made an amendment to some overlapping setbacks that we, or step back regulations that we identified, and then this item comes to you from staff as a result of discussions have, we've had with the development group and particularly with their architect, that have indicated that the height requirements or the height limits imposed by the zone make it difficult to construct the bill, to construct a building, particularly the four foot, or the four-story mixed-use building that would be on the Main Street side of the block. So what we've proposed is to reduce the upper story floor-to-ceiling height from nine feet to eight foot, eight inches, taking four inches out of those three upper floors, increasing the maximum height to the top of the roof deck from 45 feet to 47 and a half feet, but having no change to the maximum parapet height, so that's the wall that sticks up in front of the roof, that height would cha, would remain at 53 feet. It was originally written as eight feet above the roof deck, but we're actually changing that to just a maximum of 53, and now that we're proposing to move the roof deck up two and a half feet. This is a diagram of the, kind of the before and after, it's a little hard to read with the size of the numbers, but on the left you see the 53-foot tall building as controlled by our current zoning with a 14-foot clear height on the first floor, then nine feet for each of the additional floors, with a roof deck height of 45 feet and a total height to the top of parapet of 53. That leaves one foot of space for structure between each of the floors and for the roof deck. The architect for the project is indicating that's insufficient to actually construct the needed structure of the building and accommodate the structure and insulation and other items on the roof, as well as the needed pitch on the roof to drain the flat roof. So taking four inches out of each floor and adding two and a half feet to the top of the roof deck, so combining it with reductions in the interior maximum, or minimums and the exterior maximums, we yield one foot, 10 and a half inches of structure per floor, which isn't, that much isn't needed at every floor, they're not all quite the same, but that provides enough room for the architects to design the structure they need to build the building, maintains the same height of the parapet, so the same height from the street and surroundings to the building, the building would not appear any taller, and as I just mentioned, achieves our, our goal we formulated internally with consultation with the mayor in dealing with this difficulty with a combination of changes to the measurements inside of the building and on the exterior of the building. So again, this results in no change to the parent height of the building to the top of the parapet wall, and results in a two and a half foot potential increase to the height of the roof deck on, for a four-story building.
So is there any problem with that five-foot, six-inch parapet covering whatever mechanical equipment needs to be on the roof? Will that show above the parapet, is that, or is that enough to cover it?
Uh, I don't know specifically based on where they're planning to locate the equipment on the roof. There is an additional provision in the code for mechanical enclosures that would be right around the, the, any rooftop mechanical equipment. A lot of times on these types of buildings, the rooftop, the rooftop mechanic, excuse me, the rooftop mechanical equipment is not large, especially when it comes to the HVAC equipment, they often will use individual compressors for each unit, and those are just kind of scattered about the roof and are easily hid by that five-foot, six-inch parapet. The only other things that may project above that are elevator or other type of equipment, and most of the elevators in this building, in these buildings are, are hydraulic electric units and don't have a large penthouse on the roof. So I don't have a specific answer, but there are provisions to have any rooftop equipment properly screened, other, in other places in the code.
Other questions for Josh?
Now, this is the first of two elements pertaining to height in this, so if there aren't any other questions regarding this first piece, I'll move on to the second.
Okay.
Uh, the second is to address an unintended consequence that, of the requirements for the first floor height. the first floor height in the townhomes or in, for first, for first-floor residential. Right now, the code requires ten feet of clear floor-to-ceiling height in first-floor residential. That makes it difficult to have stoops for townhomes, which is really a characteristic element of a traditional groundstone or other urban townhomes. And so we are proposing to decrease the first floor, floor-to-ceiling height from ten feet to eight feet, nine inches, so a reduction of fifteen inches specifically for townhomes and only where the finished floor elevation is at least eighteen inches above the adjacent sidewalk. So what this essentially is doing is providing them a shortened first floor if they're willing to do a stoop. But if there's no stoop, then the requirement would remain at ten feet. And it just provides additional room within the maximum height for the townhomes to have that increase in elevation of the first floor to be used as a stoop when, when the design calls for it.
And the overall height isn't any different?
The overall height does not change at all. None of the exterior height changes.
Is a stoop just a porch?
Yes, there, interchangeable. No. Yep. For a porch, a stoop, a landing.
Okay.
There's a specific element in the design standards that requires buildings to employ a certain number of strategies to mitigate or not mitigate, mediate between the public and the private from the sidewalk into the building. And one of them is to employ changes in elevation. And the way we have this written really precluded the ability to do that. And it's a, it's a very attractive way to create a good transition from the sidewalk to the inside of a building and also to bring people that may be seated on the porch up closer to eye level with people that are walking by and establishing a, a good visual relationship that fosters neighborliness. So it's something we were in favor of, but had made difficult.
Okay, other questions for Josh? Okay.
This isn't just, this is the entire building code, not just for this project? Or is it just?
This is just for the Main Street South Gateway Zone.
Okay.
It's currently only applied to the Allen's block, but your next item will consider applying it all the way down to eight hundred south.
Josh, I may have missed it, but did the planning commission consider these?
Oh, yes. The planning commission recommendation was unanimous. We had two planning commissioners absent, so out of the five attending, that was a unanimous recommendation.
On both items?
On both of the two height items, correct. Their recommended motion, they recommended approval for this code amendment.
Okay. Questions, anything? Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion then for item number five.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number oh-eight, twenty-twenty-three to amend Springville City Code eleven dash four dash seven oh-eight Main Street South Gateway Building Height.
Okay, I have, I have a motion. I use second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's roll call vote. Craig?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record, I said no. And then I knew you guys would say yes, so I said, yeah, bring it. But I think the important thing is, is that Josh was very good about keeping the overall height exactly the same.
No, it's all internal there.
It's all, it's all internal movement. Yep, very good. Okay, Josh, very good. Did a good job. Okay, let's move on to item number six, if that's okay.
All right, now we're back to the proposed zone map amendment to apply the Main Street South Gateway Zone to Main Street between four south and eight hundred south. We had an extensive discussion about this at our work session two weeks ago, where the council provided basic direction that there was general support for this amendment and general support for accommodating Art City Autobody and their development of a new automobile technical center on the property just to the south of their current operation. The proposed amendment to accomplish that, thank you, is shown here. And that is simply to permit any new automobile repair minor, and specifically minor, as we worked and discussed with Art City Autobody from their initial contact, that this would fall into that category in our land use code. That though any uses that are vested by the submission of a complete site plan approval application prior to July first of this year shall be permitted to be established and granted legal non-conforming status within the zone, subject to our non-conforming buildings, lots and uses provisions. And further that the, such, these new uses would only be permitted on parcels fronting the east side of Main Street between fifth and seventh south. So it's written narrowly to provide the opportunity for Art City Autobody to pursue their planned development. And I do have the rest of the information that we discussed last week if there are additional follow-up or additional clarification questions. But again, this came to you with a unanimous recommendation from planning commission and also the same recommendation from planning commission to accommodate the proposed Art City Autobody project. And the proposed ordinance language follows the intent that they expressed in their motion.
Will you go back to the map slide?
Yes.
We had a discussion about that little notched-out piece down toward the south part there on seventh south.
Yes.
Whatever became of that?
We will be bringing to you through planning commission another amendment to clean up these boundaries and include the CC zone at the front of Fox Ridge, as well as the Snelsen Home here on the corner that we missed in the noticing and rationalizing this rear property or this zoning line probably to the middle of the block.
And I think somebody mentioned the property on the left-hand side. It's the yellow.
Oh, and the R-two as well, correct. Yeah, so all that we'll bring to you in a forthcoming amendment, as well as an analysis of uses as mentioned by Councilmember Miller to make sure that, review and make sure we just have the right set of uses in here that came from the discussion of autobody, or auto parts being permitted. So we'll, we'll bring all that back to you after we get through planning commission.
Okay, questions for Josh? Is this according to what you understood two weeks ago? Okay, my only question had to do with the protection of the city and making sure that we certainly give Art City Autobody permission, but it starts July, it goes to getting a building permit by July. Does that open a window for somebody else to sneak one in?
This is actually a site plan approval application, not a building permit. So it requires the full site engineering and site plan. And as it's crafted narrowly between five hundred and seven hundred south, I didn't identify any properties in there that looked like they could have the potential to host this type of use without, you know, consolidating or assembling property. So I tried to write it as narrowly as possible to preclude the opportunity for others, similar uses to come in.
But generally, the answer is yes. I mean, in theory, somebody could do something, right?
Yes.
And I mean, just underneath, all of our, it's probably good just as a general reminder, all of our zoning ordinances have an implementation date that's delayed. And so anyone that, even anytime you make that kind of a motion, people have the right to protect their current property interest by making an application before, before it becomes effective.
Okay.
And I, I just had one, it's gonna say, even if someone did, if they make this, the same standards of the building that we saw presented last time, I wouldn't be as concerned as I might be otherwise, because we could still require it to look like that. And I, if we don't feel good about them doing it, we shouldn't be feeling good about the others doing it. And I think it would look fine if someone did happen to beat that, if we required the same type of architecture and facade.
And that's where, that's where the catch maybe is, because if somebody within this area from fifth south to seventh south came in and already developed site in an existing building and applied for a business license application to open a auto, new automobile repair minor use, then they could potentially make the argument that they have, have already completed a site plan, lots already developed, and so they could establish that use in an existing building prior to this July first date. But I, and somebody could do that theoretically, but we did craft it narrowly in such that there doesn't really appear to be a site in there that would be available.
And my last question had to do with making sure that whatever was presented as far as the drawing, which I loved, meets the, the design that you're, you're wanting to have on that south end, is that correct?
Yes, this, your action would apply all of the existing development standards, design standards and other parts of the Main Street South Gateway ordinance. The only exception to the code that, as it's applied already on the Allen's block and will be applied here, would be that this use would be permitted, all of the other standards would.
And you're okay with all the designs? Okay, all right, sounds good. All right. Well, at least you'll be able to work with him under the heading or the, the framework that we're.
And their architects had a couple of weeks to review, which is kind of where that drawing came from and is generally where we haven't evaluated an application yet, but I'm confident we can get through the process.
Very good. Other questions for him? Okay, thanks, Josh. We have a public comment from Daniel, if you'd like to come up and say a few words. Maybe you do, or maybe you don't. I, I have you down here, so you can certainly say, no, no need.
I wasn't sure if I had to say anything, but just.
You can if you want, it's entirely up to you, so.
Okay. I think, I think everybody kind of knows why, why we're here, so just, yeah, I guess we're just trying to get an answer today.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance oh-nine, twenty-twenty-three to amend the official zone map from the community commercial CC zone to this Main Street South Gateway Zone, MSSG, for parcels generally located along Main Street from four hundred south to eight hundred south, including provisions permitting the development of Art City Autobody's new facility and the vacant unaddressed parcels between five eighty-seven and six fifty-five South Main Street. There's my motion.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's roll call vote. Mr. Snelsen?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Grandall?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. There you go. I think all of us fell in love with the design, so very well done. Thank you. Now it's off our shoulders, it's now between you and Josh, so.
Let's talk budget.
All right. Number seven, the most significant part of the meeting.
Your cohort was applauding before I even got up, so I'm very excited.
No, I was applauding for the other person, not you.
Thank you for clarifying.
You know, I've, I sat next to her only for the last forty-five minutes and, and she's spunky, so. That's right. There we go.
You didn't even laugh. I was going to jab you and you jabbed yourself.
I know, that's okay. It's all right.
Well, Mayor and Council, I'm more than happy to follow your lead in terms of how much detail you want on this. We discussed tentative budget at length last week in your special budget meeting and retreat that we held. There haven't really been any changes between then and now. I do have a presentation I can run through to maybe hit some highlights and maybe jog some memories if you've had questions come up. You're also more than welcome to cut me off at any point. Or if you want me to go deeper, I'm happy to do that as well.
It's the pleasure of the council. Jason's got a cheesy grin on his face, so go ahead and say it if you want.
I think the quicker review for me is good.
Okay.
We just spent five hours with it.
Okay.
I, I thought we were just setting up a hearing and tapping out, but I've got an appointment at eight-thirty.
What time's your movie, I'm sorry?
No, I have an appointment.
So, yeah, why don't you just do a high level? And I think we're in pretty good shape as far as it goes, so.
I'll skip over all the Utah Economic Council's economics stuff.
Well, I, I think the significant part of your presentation was the fact that you said there was no significant changes from the presentation that we went quite in depth on.
Right.
So that was very helpful to me, so.
Maybe for the benefit of the public that may be either here or tuning in online, I'll just hit a couple of quick slides and then I'll get out of your way and you can have discussion if you need to have it. And then we'd look for a motion to adopt the tentative budget and set the public hearing for June. Sort of backing up to very high level, the proposed fiscal twenty-four budget in the general fund is just over, or just shy of thirty-eight million dollars, which is up about six point four percent. The total city budget, these are all expenditures and transfers, is one hundred and twenty-three point eight million dollars, which actually sort of started, startled me a little bit when I wrote that number down. We're spending a lot of money. Probably the primary focus of this year's budget was just finding a way to fully fund fire services that we expanded in the fiscal twenty-three year, and that created a little, little over a million-dollar hurdle that we had to get over in order to balance the budget for fiscal twenty-four, but we've been able to accomplish that. In total, citywide, from general fund through all the enterprise funds, we've added about fourteen point one full-time equivalent employees. And we spent some time last week discussing the change and the process that we took this year with the directors taking a far more hands-on approach than they've taken in years past. Troy and I, in large measure, stood back, but we did have, out of necessity, to send some directives down, one of which included at first a one percent reduction, and that was really at the request of the council as part of a measure to balance the budget considering the fire service expansion. But when we got some additional bad news related to the benefit package increases from this year, we went back to the directors and added another half percent reduction into the baseline budgets that they had to work with. Additionally, we've included a six point nine percent property tax increase that generates about one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, or projected one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in order to balance the budget. And finally, we've increased what used to be a five percent transfer from the enterprise funds, or at least the utility departments within the enterprise funds to six point five percent. So that's one and a half percent increase from five to six point five. And maybe just one more note on the property tax increase, since if you adopt the tentative budget tonight, what that would trigger for us would be a public hearing in June, at which time, rather than adopting a final budget, I think the resolution actually is written as final budget, but we would adopt a proposed budget, and that would, under state law, under the truth in taxation laws, necessitate a hearing in August where you would adopt the final budget after an additional public hearing to consider the property tax increase. And the final highlight would be just the note that we've increased largely due to inflationary factors, utility rates, ranging by departments from seven to twelve percent, but a blended average of about ten percent.
And before you leave that slide, just, it's important because, I mean, people are watching on this and, and I'm sure there wasn't much attendance at the, at the meeting where we discussed all the budget items. Just a couple of things to emphasize. First of all, the personnel, you know, a fourteen add is not really representative. It's really staffing up and a lot of this expense, the new expense coming into the budget is for personnel related to public safety, right?
Exactly.
So maybe you could break down the FTEs just, just quickly on that, and then we'd talk about utilities for just a minute.
I think I've got a slide just on the FTE. So this is a list of those. The bulk of those positions were really expansions in, in fire, but you can see we've, we're proposing to add a full-time court clerk. Much of that is driven by sort of the change in the way that the municipal court functions, where much more work is done online, requiring more clerk work than what was necessary before more in-person court hearings. This is the addition of a, and I didn't correct this from last time, I This is the addition of a, and I didn't correct this from last time, I apologize. I noticed on here we had full-time maintenance technician on here twice, so a few lines down from there, I duplicated that one. That would be in our facilities department. One full-time police officer. Again, this is largely tied to growth as the community expands. We keep our level of service for policing in the city. We are proposing the addition of a lead arborist in our parks and recreation department. Again, largely with the addition of parks that we are constructing in the city in order to maintain the level of service there. We are proposing to convert some part-time hours into a full-time position down at the CRC to have a superintendent over operations. This is one of the more challenging areas of the city in terms of having enough personnel that's full-time to manage literally the hundreds of part-time staff that we have there, many of whom are of a spunky age, I should say. We're proposing to add a full-time museum educator and a full-time assistant fire chief. And then some more minor changes in terms of part-time positions or part-time or seasonal hours in the library, cemetery, the dispatch parks and also at the museum. And then on the enterprise fund side, three positions, the addition of a civil engineer, that would be a position that's new and shared by all the public works departments. And then the conversion of a part-time office assistant to a full-time position, again, shared by the public works divisions. And then finally, the conversion of some part-time hours into a full-time position to support golf maintenance.
Bruce, I think it's worth mentioning, you touched on it before, but in terms of quantification, the, the real big move on this in terms, basically, these, these positions are all being funded out of the growth of city funds as a result of growth. What's driving the property tax impact is nine additional full-time fire positions that were funded, not in this, not in the budget you're considering, but in the fiscal twenty-three budget that were hired between January and March. So Bruce mentioned that as a million dollar increase to the fire budget and that's what's really driving the decision on property taxes, continuing that funding for a full year.
And one other thing we need to make mention of and be sure everybody's aware of is that six point nine percent increase in property tax isn't your total property tax bill. That's your city portion of your property tax bill. The city portion of your property tax, if I'm correct, is one percent of your total property tax.
It's roughly fifteen percent.
Well, maybe I was thinking ten or something like that, but, but at any rate, in terms of dollars for the city portion of the property tax on, say, a four hundred thousand dollar home, what are we looking at in actual dollars rather than a percent?
Troy's pretty quick at math, definitely more quick than I am. Maybe while he's calculating that real quick.
Just to help people understand that this is not going to be a budget killer item.
Right.
And the last time that a property tax increase was made, I mean, when was the last time? I thought you said we haven't.
The, the city has never done truth in taxation, so I don't actually have data on the last time it was done, so it's been more than thirty years. It looks like about, on a four hundred thousand dollar home, I did that really quick, but it looks like about seventeen dollars.
So I just wanted people to understand where that's coming from.
And Chief Clinton, the extra fire personnel, that takes us to three full crews all the time, or overnight it's just two full crews, right? At all times, so it's gonna, gonna keep response times. It's good. Yep.
So, and we're just conferring here, if it's, if, it's actually a dollar sixty-seven is what it is. Dollar sixty-seven. So we should clarify, we're trying to figure out how many, which zeros, right? It's either sixteen seventy. Yeah, exactly. So let me look it up and before we're done here, I'll have an answer for it.
Troy's an attorney, not a mathematician.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
While he's looking that up, maybe I'll just finish this slide while I'm here, because I think it's also important to, to note there's a fair number of additions there, but also the city's a very diverse operation. We have departments that grow while others shrink, all in the same year. So based on workload and projected workload for the coming budget year, we actually are reducing three, three positions, a full-time building inspector, a full-time public works inspector, and a part-time blue staker. And that's really just based on forecasted workload for the coming budget year. It should still leave us with the ability to respond to development that comes in. And if higher than expected development comes in, that'll result in new revenues and maybe we'll be back before you with a budget amendment to add positions back, but we feel like right now the prudent thing to do would be to right-size those divisions for the workload that we project coming into the next budget year. Just very high level, general fund revenues, you can see sort of the big drivers there, about four point two million would be built into the budget under property tax, including that rate increase on the property tax. And that's generating a total of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. We're right about the ten million dollar level on sales tax. I think Troy mentioned in the recent Friday update that we've got sort of competing projections out there. We're on track right now in the current budget year to come in about ten percent above our budget and next year's would take that expected level by the end of this fiscal year, which we're now getting close to that end with a three percent increase on, on it. If we look at what the state had been forecasting previously, they had probably an additional five hundred thousand on top of that that they would have projected. We just got a projection from the league. Again, they're looking at every city in the, in the state, so I don't know how dialed they are in exactly to Springville, but they're projecting about five hundred thousand less, so the projecting that's in the budget is right in between those two. I feel fairly confident with it and usually Troy and I wrestle over what that number should be and I, because I eat more cheeseburgers, tend to get them into the lower number because I'm conservative. Another big mover, just to point it out, we've got two point three million dollars budgeted in intergovernmental revenues. These are generally grants or transfers from other governmental entities, sea road money, one of the biggest drivers there. Last year's budget, or I should say the fiscal twenty-three budget, included almost two million dollars in ARPA funds from the federal government that are now going away because those payments have been made. So as you are reviewing documents, you may see a big shift between prior year and current year proposed intergovernmental revenues and that shift is the disappearance of the additional ARPA money. We're projecting about four point four million dollars in charges for services. These would be things like ambulance fees, but also parks and rec, CRC, those types of things. There are some fee increases proposed. Those are included in the tentative budget, but also projected participation rates as they increase and we are seeing some increases there. And finally, a total of about eight point two million dollars in transfers and some utilization of reserves. The reserves that I'm talking about are sea road reserves in order to balance street-related projects and that's the only thing that those dollars can be used for. I'm very close to being done. I do think it's important for transparency's sake to talk briefly about transfers to the general fund. We're like many other particularly public power cities, we make some transfers from our enterprise funds into the general fund in order to help offset some of the costs there as providing general governmental services. The first thing we transfer are administrative fees. This is just overhead costs, so these are, there's a direct correlation or exchange of services for, in consideration of the fee, so legal services, administrative services, finance, treasury, those types of things. This would be an allocated cost to the enterprise fund so that they don't have to duplicate those services and we consolidate it under the umbrella of the city's general fund. That's a total of about three million dollars across all enterprise funds. The next column, the operating transfer, this is the change that we're proposing of increasing the transfer rate from five percent to six point five percent, which generates in total of about four point three seven five million in transfers. We will be sending out some notice to utility customers. We'll be posting it online on our website and on social media. This is part of a state transparency law requirement that we, that we publish the amounts that are proposed to being transferred from the enterprise funds for general fund use. And then finally, we've got utilities that are provided by our utility fund that are not paid for by the general fund, so these are sort of in-kind services, but required under the same transparency law to quantify those in dollar value. So you can see at the final column there, a total of about seven point four million dollars in transfers that come from the enterprise funds into the general fund. Talked about personnel, just very high level capital projects on the general fund side, about ten point eight million dollars with an additional one point three million dollars in vehicle and equipment replacements. We talked briefly last time. We're gonna now see some projects start to spring. This may be something exciting for residents here in the city. The PAR tax that was adopted in the last election is now in effect and we've programmed the first round of dollars there for some projects within the city. So we've got some improvements here on the city center, a large gazebo and performing area here at the city center park area, some improvements at the soon-to-be-open Cherry Ridge Bike Park, a significant number of improvements over at the Memorial Park, including some shade structures on the tennis court, a wiffle ball field, some batting cages. We're also gonna continue the mini-grants to outside entities that provide largely performing art opportunities within the city and then some changes on the general fund operations side. These are largely program-related, but also an events coordinator that'll be housing the recreation department to help coordinate and expand city celebrations and events. All that was considered and recommended by the PAR board, which is made up of a total of, what, eighteen, I think?
Seventeen members and then Chris and I, the council representatives there.
There's been considerable deliberation over how to best spend these dollars. On the enterprise, enterprise fund side, again, we, we talked briefly about overall, about a ten percent rate increase there across the board. You can see here relative to our neighbors, even with the proposed rate increases, still being towards the bottom end of total utility costs annually by the average resident.
And do those, those don't include increases that the other cities are making? Is that correct?
Troy, you put this slide together.
We're not sure yet what those.
Yeah, we're not sure. We have a general idea. Both cities are considering their tentative budgets tonight, so we have, I, I looked Friday so I could provide better information, but they did not publish theirs, so we'll check over the next little bit. We were able to find a variety of different increases between two and five or six percent and that's just showing an average of three for the other cities.
There are a couple of other slides here related to enterprise funds. I don't know that you want me to spend any time on these. Really, it's a matter of rates being increased in order to accommodate primarily inflation-related pressures that we're seeing in building projects and in the power department. Again, we've discussed this one in our study session, but we'll move forward with looking at some debt issuance and probably need to now modify this budget slightly before you consider the budget in June to accommodate that budget overage for the Whitehead Power Plant, just so we get it in the budget before it's adopted. That is not currently included in the numbers that you see here, so anticipated another two, two point two, two point four million dollars added in that one specific project.
Just jumping back to that other issue, I think I actually just stumbled on where your number came from, Councilmember Snellson. It is sixteen dollars and seventy cents on a four hundred thousand dollar home approximately. That would be annually. Springville City is eleven percent of your total tax bill, so actually that, that increase would be about a one percent increase to your total tax bill.
Maybe that's where I got the number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the last slide had to do with golf course, which was just to say that the golf course has been doing well, so there's a few projects that have been deferred for quite a while that we now have some funding to do, so we expect to see them catching up on some of those deferred maintenance projects, primarily cart path renovation and those types of things.
And sandbagging.
We do have a lot of sandbags that were not there previously, so the good news is we still have a number twelve fairway in green, so. At least today we do. We'll see if tomorrow they do too. That's the extent of the presentation. If you've got any, if you've got any other questions that have come up, I'd be happy to address those, otherwise we'd look for your approval of the resolution.
Okay, any other questions for Bruce? I think it's good for the public to know that we spent, how many hours hashing this through? Five hours?
Well, that was our last meeting.
Yeah, just, that was just one meeting.
That was one meeting. We had discussions prior to that.
Well, sure, but, so we spent quite a bit of time on all these issues that seemingly are not taken lightly by this group, so. Okay, if there's no questions, then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen to adopt the city of Springville tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four and set a public hearing for adoption of the final budget on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM.
Okay, have a motion in a second.
One second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Liz? Craig?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We have two other items I, I do.
Okay.
That be okay? I just need to, kind of the fifth, fifth, this sales tax thing, I just need a little direction on how to respond to MAG on what your thoughts are in relationship to raising the sales tax, whether you want them to go ahead and do it, at least as far as our voice as a city.
Was it MAG or was it the county?
Well, it's the county who makes the declaration, but MAG is collecting the data
Oh, okay.
so that they can represent to the county, nobody wants it, or everybody's for it, or half are for it or half are against it, so. Thoughts on it? Do you want to study about it or?
I'm all for it. I'd say it's one of the more fair taxes, so I'm for that one over others.
What, what, we kept talking in percentages, but I didn't ever understand how much that would actually bring to Springville City in a year.
You're gonna make me do math again?
Well.
I mean, Bruce, maybe you should do that one, but we're talking point, point one percent of sales tax, right? But it's not, it's not gonna be on food, so. Correct. It's on the, the same ones as the state.
Well, it's not even point one. I thought it was point zero five percent.
Oh, is it half of the point one?
Yeah, it was half of one, it was the one that would be residual for transportation.
Yeah, so point zero five percent. It's, it's not a very big number. I, I mean, it's.
What, I mean, you said it's ten billion in sales tax, right?
Right, and it's smaller than that, so, I mean, that's like fifty thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
Maybe what we ought to do is let's get some data together and send it out to you. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah, I can, we can do that.
And, and while you're doing that, just to clarify, that's, that rate would be set against the entire county, is I understand it.
That's right.
But would we receive our percentage proportion of collect, of what was collected from Springville places? See, it gets come, yeah.
It's, it's further complicated because, and I'll have to go double-check this, but it's my understanding that we would get it, but we would also get it on the basis of population and collection, so.
Both.
Yes, but that makes it harder again to answer the question.
It's harder to answer the question, but it might result in more money because you'll have more diversity in terms of taxable items.
Right.
And I guess the main reason to ask that question is, is because not knowing how much we're going to get, we don't realize how much that's gonna increase the tax.
Okay, well, why don't we get a little data together and make a, just send it out to us so that we, we have a chance to review it and if you'd like to discuss it further in the next meeting in a week, that would be great. Mike and I won't be here, but give you a chance to kind of hash it through and maybe learn a little bit more about it. So it is, it is pretty confusing and it is splitting a hair and then splitting it and then splitting it again and it's, it's quite interesting how politically this is, has taken a different slant, so. So the, the last item was something that Liz was a part of. Craig hasn't had a chance yet and Jason, but Mike and Chris also did to where we went down and, and toured. to where we went down and toured Chris and Rick Salisbury's Container Corner. And they're in the process of making an application with the state liquor license. And what they're looking for is the city to basically give a letter that says, "We don't see any reason, we have no issue with what they're trying to put in." They went through what businesses are trying to do. It's not an essential part of the package. It's just a means by which we are able to either support or not support that sort of a thing, so.
I talked to Chris, and I'm, I supported. I gave, I gave him my verbal. Who's it, Chris?
Yeah, it's, you know, when, when people hear liquor license, we tend to back off a little bit out of fear of turning something into a bar. The way this has been presented and what they're trying to do is create more of a, more of, I guess, an entertainment venue with liquor available than a bar like the old Stalker Club or Silver Dollar or something like that, you know, that was just kind of a nightmare for the city. So this is just, it's a pretty simple thing to do for, based on what they're trying to accomplish down there, and I think it's, I think it'll be good.
Okay, do you want me to work with Troy on putting a letter together? Jason, you haven't had a chance. Do you wanna, do you wanna go down and do it? Because I don't want to add you to it if you're uncomfortable or what your position is. And you're welcome to think about it or visit them.
Mayor, just for reference, normally, these have been on the council agenda. These are a normal thing that's, the council's considered over the years.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, so do you want to put it on the next council agenda?
It's just part of the state process. Part of it, if I remember correctly, I haven't looked at these rules for a while, because we haven't had one for the last couple of years. They're also kind of looking for, you know, the city's support based upon, we have very limited liquor sales, primarily on the beer side, rule-setting ability. And so they're looking at kind of some of the other stuff we have in place. So we'd be happy to go through that process, collect it, present it in the staff report so you know what you're considering.
That'd be great. That'd be great. We're just kind of winging it, so thank you.
Would it be too much to, I just told them, I mean, I'd love to go down there. I just told them I'm out for a month, just because of what we're trying to do with my family, but.
Sure.
But would it be too much to ask him just to come in and just explain conceptually what he's trying to do?
Well, that's another reason why it's good to do that. It's their own choice, but we can let them know, hey, it'll be on the agenda this time.
Oh, oh, yeah. He's saying that'd be part of that.
Then they could come, let you know here in this meeting what's happening.
Okay.
So it's on the agenda to write a letter of support from the city council and mayor?
Well, yeah, basically, again, I'll have to go look at the laws to see if they haven't changed since the last time. It's basically, you could call it a letter of support, but it's really just a form letter saying that this business doesn't, hasn't, you know, isn't in trouble without any of your other laws and things like that.
Not an objection.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to say it.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Well, that'll give us a chance, so Troy, thank you. I didn't know how that was put together in the past, so appreciate it. Okay, other items that need to be brought up?
I just, you may be interested, and I may have just navigated away from it. Shoot, I did try and to find your fifth-fifth information, but you may be interested, and the news just hit. Salt Lake City is in the process of doing the same thing they are tonight. They are not proposing any tax increases, but they do have an eighteen percent increase in water fees, fifteen in sewer, and ten percent in stormwater fees, so. I think you're gonna see lots of big raises around, and I think you've managed the budget and the hard issues of inflation and things well, so.
Cool. Yes, John?
Just a couple things. So we have, I think Kim has an agreement for you to sign tonight, Mayor, for three-hundred thousand dollars to go to the bike park. And then earlier today, we found out that Carla and Stacy were successful in getting another two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. So.
I didn't, I didn't know that the three-hundred was official, so that's very good to know.
Yes, we do have an agreement from the county, and we have it ready for you to sign.
Oh, excellent. Well, there you go. Very good. Stacy? Rock and roll. Carla, thank you.
This is where you demand a pay increase from the mayor?
I could, it's coming up quick, Art City Days. I'm sure we'll have some big discussion, but are we writing as normal as council? Okay. Well, we usually get told what we're doing, so.
So we're doing, so we're doing the golf carts again?
Golf carts and candy.
Okay.
We have to do candy?
I don't know.
Well, I have a house full of candy, so I can tell you, she's been buying it since. Yes, Troy?
Maybe just quickly, I know Brad slipped out. He was going back up to the golf course. During this meeting, actually, we got some notices to various city staff members from the state hydrologist that actually, his calculations are the Hubble Creek peaks tonight. Actually, the Colorado Forecast Center for NOAA also had bumped their forecast up to just barely above last night's peak flow. It stays high again tomorrow night. So we're continuing with our same operations. I think Patrick's kept you as a council involved, but we do have multiple nighttime patrols of the creek from our public works staff. We also have multiple nighttime patrols of key areas from our police officers. So we have public works, fire, and police on twenty-four hours watching the situation. And things were tough at the golf course the last thirty-six hours. And the reason Brad went up there is you can actually hear things moving in the creek. I mean, that sounds kind of scary, but the boulders and sand and other things are moving, which is actually causing change in flow. So kind of the peak places throughout the city kind of are pretty static, but in limited areas like a golf course, you roll a couple boulders to the wrong place, all of a sudden, the high water shifts a little bit. So we've placed more sandbags up there again today and are watching that closely. And then we've gotten some great resources from the community, and we've been running some very advanced models at all different levels of flow. And it's predicting accurately where our trouble spots are gonna be on the creek. And so we're watching those and reinforced those. So we're doing everything possible to keep the creek where it's supposed to be, and thus far, it's behaving. So we hope for another forty-eight hours of that happening.
The photos that we got of the home along Hubble Creek that lost a couple of trees, have they, is that stabilized and they're not losing any more backyard?
Yeah, we were surprised by how little they've lost, but they do continue to have some erosion there. You're seeing that in quite a few places in that same location. A structure across the creek has received damage as well. So the creek is scouring. It's moving banks. I had another notification today from another place in town where some city property has probably moved two to five feet already, meaning the bank has moved back several feet at the golf course on kind of, it would be eleven and twelve, the creek in between there. That bank there's been undercut by several feet. So there's a lot going on out there right now with everything.
And it's steady and hard.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think, I think that our city staff employees need to be publicly commended for the work that they've done to mitigate any, any serious flooding.
I appreciate that. I conveyed that, and the mayor conveyed that very eloquently this morning in our Emergency Operations Center meeting. And it's, it's, it's not the management. It's the people at the end of chainsaws and shovels. We were out, citizens and employees alike filling just thousands of sandbags and moving them around. And the gratifying thing was, the employees just, I mean, we had several, they were sixteen-hour-plus days, and they just had a smile, and they were doing their thing. It was, it was amazing to see.
And if tonight's like last night, as far as, it was a pretty quiet night compared to the volume that went through the city. It was incredible how much, and, and, you know, there's, there may be some more issues tonight, but.
Realize they're not just standing there. We're actively working it. Both of the last two nights, many bridges had debris removed from them. So there was a lot happening.
The debris basin is scary to me. And it constantly has stuff flowing to have to be removed, it looks like. I mean, we've lived here, we've had it now, like forty years?
Right, this is the first time any of the city staff have seen the debris basin flow over the top. In some analysis today, we think some of the tubes, that there is actually debris stuck against the grate down below that's limiting that flow, because the flows we're seeing during the day should not be causing it to go over the top. It's okay, it's functioning exactly the way it's supposed to. It's not a dangerous or terrible thing. But we're gonna wait for those flows to come down more. The debris basin's maintained by Utah County. We're in close coordination with them. As the flows come down in Thursday or Friday, we're gonna take a closer look at that and probably clean that back out again. But we don't want to do that right now and potentially cause a surge through town when we're already at very high levels.
If you, if you haven't seen that, it's kind of interesting to go look at.
It is a tourist attraction. That was a concern to our county commissioners. I do, I do think I saw up there, they've, they put some tape up, the sheriffs have, just primarily to keep people from going down close to the moving water. I think if they stay up on the dirt road or the trail to observe it, that's, that's fine and a safe location. We don't want them down close to where the water's moving.
No, they shouldn't be.
We heard from the county commissioner, I probably shouldn't say this on the record, but they stopped a man who was unloading a raft. He was gonna go down Spanish Fork River.
Yeah, there's always someone, kayak.
Yeah, you know, no shirt sleeves and the way he was going, so. Okay, sounds good. Well, entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hey, thanks, you guys are coming up here.